Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting. Please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, please take your role, Erin.
Sure. Councilmember Dick, your councilor Gray.
Here.
Councilor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilor Sherwin.
Here.
Councilor Fournier.
Here.
Okay, we are all here. First item tonight is I need an approval of the, there's no changes, right?
Correct.
Approval of the agenda.
I shall approve.
Your second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions and anything? All right, Linda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, next is our public input period. Uh, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited thirty minutes. Under Iowa with a meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. So anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight?
So wait. Chris Jansen, four zero five North Franklin Street. I've never been so disappointed and disgusted embarrassed by three members of this council. Joe, Linda, and Brian. In January, you took what had been in the planning stage.
I'm sorry, I need to speak about the whole council when we speak. Okay, yeah, no, that's okay.
In January, you took what had been in the planning stages for fifteen years and struck it down in one meeting by making assumptions and false accusations with no interest in talking with the airport commission. We listened to leaders of this community asking you not to pose their report review that it would show Manchester exposed for business. Then during the last council meeting, you were presenting facts about resurfacing the runway at such a discounted cost it would have been stealing from the federal government, as well as letters from more than fifty people supporting the airport. But instead, you made more false accusations against the airport commission of misleading you and not presenting facts with a focus on eminent domain, which has never been a priority of the airport commission. You then put it on the backs of the airport commission to go around town petition to gather more support, which would be a waste of time because let's be honest. You have no intention of seeing this airport or airport commission succeed. If it wasn't made clear in January, it was made clear during the last meeting. Your goal is to let the airport, a piece of city-owned property enjoyed by many people with the love of flying wither away and die. Not all people use the parks. Not all people use the swimming pool or the whitewater park. And not everyone uses the airport. These are all sources of recreation. These are places that improve quality of life and bring others to Manchester. Should we close and sell property just because the city doesn't make any money and not everyone uses them? If that were the case, we would have nothing for the citizens to do and another reason for others not to visit Manchester. You have no appreciation for those who have invested money and time building hangars, maintain, maintain their aircraft, volunteering their time at the airport to make it a destination location for recreation and business. If this airport had committed a crime and you three were on the jury, correction, if all of you were on the jury, the airport would have already been found guilty before the trial even started. To make rash, sudden, uninformative decisions are unprofessional and unbecoming of an elected official. Instead of pushing the city forward and making it competitive with other cities, you have put it on pause, if not gone backwards. You have taken Manchester, which has the unique position of being between three major cities and have said, we don't want progress, we don't want to grow. If a city doesn't grow, it dies. You should always leave something better than when you founded. Your duty as being part of the council is not to serve for your own personal interest, but the interest of others. You are not to serve the few, but all. You are leaders of this community and should be leading with dignity, honor, and respect. I was going to quote a section of the Declaration of Independence till I came in and I saw the mission statement that's listed up there on the board. It may be a good thing for you to review. If you are unable to serve with common sense, unable to listen to facts, and stay unbiased, if you are unable to steer clear of prejudices, then I will look forward to your upcoming recommendations.
Thank you, Chris. Does anybody else like to speak to the council? Hey, hearing none. I'm going to close the public input period. Uh, next before us, we have the consent agenda. Item one. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting on June twenty fourth. Approval of the minutes of the June twenty fourth. Uh, we're giving a city council meeting and a July first committee of the whole meeting. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution seventy-three approving the bills and expense reports. Next, I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of city reports and minutes. Uh, we have parks and rec, our monthly activity report for revenue, and our monthly activity report for expenses. I need a motion to approve liquor license applications. One is a new one for a five-day special class C retail alcohol license for Lucky White Wine Slushies for an event at six oh nine West Jasper Street. Is that on July seventeenth?
That's for ridiculous days, which I think is that?
It's actually the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, but the license, I think they give it a day ahead just to make sure they're covered.
Covered, yeah.
And that's at Momentum Screen Princes with that location.
They must be doing the same thing, um, for August sixth because that's close to our last music.
They are. They'll be there for Music in Macaca, so it's actually.
Okay.
The eighth.
And then also a renewal for their retail alcohol license for Riverbend. Next item, I need a motion to approve as part of the Music in Macaca. Is it Loco or Glaco?
Yes.
They would like to set up their mobile truck for the event. Uh, they're serving alcohol beverages as part of their business model, their wine slushies. And they're required by the Iowa alcoholic beverage to have a lease agreement with the property owner to set up a required one. Since they are, will be setting up in the park, parking lot at Riverfront Park, the state will need to approve a lease agreement for them to be able to operate. So we want to approve that lease agreement.
Yeah.
Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution seventy-four. And that's, uh, mending salary resolution for some, uh, wages and salaries. These are for our city. Or we talked about this for the swim team coaches and also circulation for the library.
And that was.
And then map users, yes. Next, motion to approve, uh, request of the walk to end of Alzheimer's committee to close the south portion of South Twelve Street, beginning on the south side of, uh, Best Rest Hotels, North Parking Lot. They're having a walk from seven AM until eleven on September twenty-first. Then we have a motion to approve, um, the recording of our committees as a whole meetings. Actually, I think we discussed at our last committee as a whole meeting. With that, I'll take a motion in a second to, uh, approve the consent agenda and I'll open it up for comments.
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presenter.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments before we go? Hearing none. Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next, regular agenda items. Um, we have the industrial water tower repainting project. Um, if you want to give us any more information on this, Tim, I know we
Yeah.
Chad talked to us about this.
Chad did talk to us, um, you know, the water power tower is due to be painted clean. We'll do the pressure washing on it. Paint it, uh, update the logo on there. And the question, one of the questions coming up is do we got the logo on two sides or just the one side facing highway thirteen to twenty? It's two thousand dollars more to paint it to the second side. We think it looks sharp, I mean, multiple locations, but that's up to the council. It's forty-four hundred dollars to do the one and the two thousand dollars to paint the second. So sixty-four hundred dollars.
Is it currently on both sides?
No, it's just on one side.
That's what I thought, okay. Guess you can see it from the highway.
Yep.
We had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for this project, so.
Was it ninety or was it?
I looked at the budget sheet before I came into this meeting.
Well, you're ahead of me on that one. I was thinking it was ninety-five, but yeah, ninety thousand dollars, so. Um, we'll come up with the rest of it.
I like the idea of having it on both sides in the reasons because.
Eighty-seven.
With both?
Eighty-seven thousand with one, then we have two thousand eighty-nine. Good, okay, sorry.
Um, I like having it on both sides. I, I think that it's good, um, to be able to see it from both directions. I think that when you're going south, then you can be able to see it. And I think that highway thirteen choose to not, that it would be a worthwhile thing to do for two thousand dollars. I think it's worth the exposure also. So I, I would like to sister.
I'm good for it. Hey, I think that's a great idea to do both sides for two thousand dollars.
Two thousand, well, yeah.
Thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
Do the other side, why not? Uh, the only thing I kind of recommend in there, Tim or Aaron, somebody should make sure they let the fire department know because they'll be draining that water tower at that time.
Yeah, when, when they take the tower down and be painted, that's when we talked about having the extended hours for the water department. Basically, they'll run the pumps from four AM to ten PM. At that time, both water towers in the north end will be full. They'll drain down, they'll come back in, I believe it was four AM. Uh, just turn those pumps back on and start running again.
Yeah, I'm just saying in case they have to do a mutual aid with Ryan Masonville. It's usually just so that they're aware that that tower's down.
Yep.
So, no, I'm good with it.
Anybody else? Comments?
They will inspect the interior door, why they have it down though, to make sure we don't have any issues inside.
I made a motion to approve the vote from K W C O.
With the addition or not?
Oh, yeah, with the addition of the two thousand dollars, do both sides.
I'll second.
Shoot, I had to get that out.
Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
I will not be finding this job.
I think that was in the bid, wasn't it? Made it cheaper, competitive, I don't know.
Okay, uh, next, I need a motion to approve the quote from K and W coding, the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars, and this is for, uh, painting material park band show. And I think is that, there's three quotes on here.
We received three quotes, K and W is the lowest bidder. Um, Doug has been looking at ways to paint that, and there's going to be some touch of copying and stuff like that. Uh, K and W will be in town to do the water tower. They could be able to, uh, ban show thereafter. They do good work. They've done more water towers in the past, so I don't have any concerns about the work that they do. Uh, they can make a pull that through themselves, so, uh, we're in favor of having them work. We did budget for this as well.
I came in about twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars less than the highest bid, so that's pretty awesome.
And we had budgeted forty-five.
Even nicer than that.
Well, I'll make a motion over K and W's, uh, the.
I'll shut it then. Any further discussions or questions?
I'm just really happy to see how much lower it is.
Yeah. Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And next. Need a motion to adopt resolution seventy-five, that's to award the Commerce Fort Street Extension Project project at Chick-fil-A Escavating in the amount of three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And this is for street work that's going down A one.
Yes, now I want to make sure the council understands I have not yet received a signed development agreement from A one yet. So, we do have agreement with Manchester Enterprises. Uh, they are picking up half the cost of this street. Uh, they, even things, if some should happen where A one does not come in, they would still like to move forward with the street project. This opens up three lots, if A one, but we still have strong feelings that A one is working with the state right now to get some different aid uh, finances. There's, there's an issue as far as what their classification is, um, for state aid. Right now, the state is classifying them as a retailer, a rental, and not industrial because of the work that they do for the how they remanufacture those units. So that, those negotiations are going on right now, but we have the bids here in front of us, and I know they want to turn dirt as soon as they can if they get things going. Uh, for us, I don't think we'll see the street project come in ever again at this price. So my recommendation is we'll move forward with it so that we have this ready to go. It's shovel-ready sites and.
So basically, some offer, they offer opportunities for other industrial companies to move.
So it would be two lots as long as A one stays, if A one were, for some reason.
Actually, it's, A one's gonna buy two lots.
Okay.
The third lot is a potential for them to buy. That would be access to off of Burden Road, goes through the railroad tracks. If, if A one does, for whatever reason, it doesn't happen, we have three lots ready to go.
Okay.
And it's ninety thousand dollars cheaper than.
Than what we were anticipating, and I, Jason was even dropping his price a little bit and optimistic at that price. So, uh, we did get extremely good bids. I don't think the contracts were actually making money on this. I think what they're doing is to keep even their people busy.
Do you have any concerns about them not following through?
Yeah, I don't, but again, I haven't seen the signed development agreement back yet, so I don't. I want the council to be aware we have not received that. Well, I know their attorneys looked at it, has some comments that you want to look at. Other than that, uh, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't take it.
And if they don't get three shovel-ready lots, that's great to have, so I would approve of resolution seventy-five.
What's your second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
And next, we have a motion to adopt resolution seventy-six to set August twelfth at five PM as a date and time for a public hearing on proposed urban renewal amendment to the Manchester Urban Renewal Area. And that proposed amendment will authorize a new urban renewal project consisting of providing tax increment finance support to West Schulte in connection with this development of a multifamily housing.
All this resolution has a set date and time for the public hearing. It doesn't adopt anything other than that. It just sets date and time for a public hearing.
I'm making motion to approve item six point four. I'll second that. Right.
I got Brian, okay. Any other questions or comments?
And this is just the one unit, right?
This is the one twelve unit.
Which I swung out over there today and looked, they were pouring foundations and.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to, uh, approve pay estimate number three in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three dollars, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents to Pierce Tobin Construction for the Grand Avenue Extension Project.
I'm making motion to approve.
I'll second. I thought maybe there was something that he said, but.
Yep, I, uh. I think it was great.
I drove on it last night.
I haven't driven on it yet, but I hate driving, but I didn't.
I walked it.
I.
Well, we.
The guys looked at me funny when I was walking.
It is open, the signs are up. Um, we're, we're ready to go. After the fair, we'll come in and finish up the, um, dirt, ready and stuff like that.
And we already got our first burnout on it. It wasn't me. Yeah. Way down there at the actual intersection, there's a very view there though.
Yeah, okay. So I had. If there's any other questions, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Do you want to say why?
I have been opposed to the Grand Extension from where we're getting, that's fair.
But, let's talk about that after we get, all right, okay. Um, Brian?
No. So.
We'll talk. And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Joe.
Or Joe, sorry, Joe. I'm sorry, I went back to that. I apologize. Joe, I didn't mean to leave you out.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, next, we, um, need a motion to approve K estimate number four in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-four cents to top grade excavating with the two twenty twenty-four East Main Street Improvement Project.
I'll make a motion to approve items of sentences.
Would you second? I'll second. Any other questions? Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Uh, I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Nuance properties updates.
Tim, Vic and Tim Heims and I met before we came on tonight. Uh, we don't have any new properties that Tim's ready for us to proceed with. He's got several where he's sent certified letters out. And their deadlines are this week, so we may very well have some. But to give you up to date on the three that we do have pending, four twenty-one South Madison Street was given, we have an order for them to have it cleaned up by, by July ten. If it's not done, we'll allow for an order to allow us to clean and have the costs assessed to the property. Uh, four oh five Main Street, their date for cleanup was July third. Uh, I know they did some cleaning and Tim, we're gonna, I told Tim I'd get back to him because I didn't, when we met, I couldn't find the date when it had to be done.
I'm sorry, would you say that address again?
Four oh five Main Street.
Is it Grant Street?
Is it Grant Street?
Grant Street. That's four oh five.
Purple, purple rainbow?
Yep.
Yeah.
I just wanted, right? Because somebody's gonna hear this.
Somebody's gonna think they're going to have your house. Thank you.
Yeah.
I was sitting here looking at this, I was like, where's that one?
And then, uh, there's one that's still pending at eight oh four South Second Street, and that's set for trial, hearing on August twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So, we have, uh, two that I think probably be getting done one way or the other, and we'll see on the other, in August. But Tim did have a list of four or five that he has letters out to. So we'll probably have those come on.
Any questions for Jim?
Well, we also, while we're at it, we were saying, we talked about, we haven't decided exactly what to do, but we have some properties that just habitually are doing nothing to maintain the grass and the weeds and all, and we're gonna end up being a caretaker. Uh, we have the ability to file a municipal infraction for those violations too and get a fine of more amount, something maybe the word would be if you're paying two fifty to mow it, you might not want to pay it.
There's a.
Paying eighty.
No, we don't charge that. Well, when we mow it, we charge them by whatever the minimum bid is, plus a fifty dollar administrative fee. And.
That's over a hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah.
Roughly.
But it gets mowed when, we don't cite them until it's at six inches tall. And then we give them a week after that to get it mowed or else we come and do it. So that's what, five times out of the year, you know?
And you chronically have high weeds that people are putting up with because you have to wait till it gets to a certain height. So we're looking at, uh, whether or not on some occasions, we may want to file for a citation to go a little further. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be the grass police and going out after everybody one time they're over, but.
That's the ones that are doing it all the time. It's the same situation with the water bill, not paying the water.
Yeah. So I just thought if you, if we do end up doing that, issue at least here, we've been thinking about it, and that's why if it comes up, that's pointable comment. But we haven't done any yet today.
All right. Any other further questions for Jim? Thank you. So, who wants to go first, Sam or Jason? Age before beauty.
Yeah. So, uh, ready to have Pierce Tobin, you know, they did stop by this morning. With all the rains, we've been getting every other day. Um, they want to try to tune it up the ditch on the east side. No work will be happening on the west side or up on Fairview Drive. They come to town, just be to do some rip rap and trying to clean some stuff up next to those culvers this week if it's fit. I'm not sure if it's going to be fit or not, but there won't be anything to impact fair operations up there. And then we just need to wait for the seating window to kind of open up and kind of polish things up that way. Um, and then with the award of the contract for Commerce Court, all work on getting contracts and bonds put together, some of those are to Chick-fil-A, bring those back to council for you guys to go ahead and, uh, actually approve those contracts, and then we can look to get started. I, I think they were thinking August here, early to mid-August, I think, is when I, when I talked to, uh, Randy Stephan after the opening, he thought they'd probably be looking to kind of mobilize in there. Again, all weather dependent on what they've got going on with smaller projects right now, so. For a rain in a couple of days, kind of.
Yes.
Now, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
East Main, so. Another kind of meeting, more informal meeting with contractor on site today, so we're gonna, quick instructions in town are gonna continue for paving sidewalks, driveways for the next few weeks. Um, Monday, July fifteenth is the new kind of tentative schedule where we're gonna have soft opening for business access only. So the detour will remain in place for local traffic. That's all gonna be up and it's gonna be more or less closed yet through the end of the project when topsoil work and all that stuff is done. Um, so it's just safer, safer conditions, but starting Monday, the tentative plan is to start Monday, July fifteenth. Probably open up partially that east end by Style Street and maybe Anderson Street. Once we have tier time, that's all ready to be opened, so people can at least one lane, one-way traffic kind of come in and out. And then Manchester Signs, Cork and Bottle, Turnkey, those driveways will be poured one at a time. So one drive will be rocked up while the other ones be poured, and then both ones will be half at a time, so. And people are going into those businesses, they got tape or combed up, please don't drive into the wet concrete. Yeah, I've had it happen on some projects, so don't want, don't want.
Be careful, Brian, don't drive in your own car.
So like I say, that's, and we've been getting here time three or four days, but there still might be some touch up and stuff, and they'll have to come through for the sidewalk and then come back and finish in the driveways. So hopefully by the end of July, a lot of the concrete's starting to get wrapped up. Hopefully by mid-August, things are getting to the point where it's topsoil and seating's getting completed and project is hopefully substantially completed, hopefully say mid-August timeframe. So that's what I have, unless anybody has any questions for me or anything else.
When do you think it'll be fully dry?
Hopefully by mid-August.
Mid-August.
Yeah, hopefully by mid-August.
Maybe the seating and stuff will be going on and then we'll still be able to ride up, drive on, yeah.
I think we'll try to keep as many, have them keep as many blow off of it just in case.
Makes it easier to get worked on if you're not fighting traffic.
Yeah, so like I said, for most part, a lot of the main line from Styles to at least Anderson will be rewrapped up this week. They're poured a lot of box outs today. Bailey Drive, I think they're gonna maybe do part of that intersection tomorrow and then finish Anderson Street intersection tomorrow. Um, but the biggest controlling items are gonna be sidewalks and driveways, so need to be top grade and start backfilling. And top grade's actually been out there today too. They got out there to start backfilling some of the curb and sidewalks where they can. Try to stay ahead of schedule, so I'm not gonna do it all at once. So top grade is also out there working in conjunction with Wex.
Will they get curbing better for you?
Yeah, so all the curb, pretty much the main line along East Main Street, pretty much all the curb is curb and mainland is done, so they just gotta do some main line, I'll call it, on Anderson Street and Bailey Drive itself. So and then sidewalk has been poured from the west end of the project by the tax service to Anderson Street, basically. So, right now though, before they can do much east of Anderson Street, gotta get traffic on that new pavement so, and then access into businesses from the new pavement so they can remove those temporary roads. So that's kind of what the, not necessarily hold up and hold up for that portion, obviously still worth doing.
Talking dry weather too for several days, so that's good.
It's been a while since we've seen a four or five day span.
Of course, I got the camera pulled home now, so.
Just leave it there for a while.
I'm done.
Okay, that's all right.
Thanks.
Good news. All right, thank you. All right, uh, Jim?
Well, I, I, I remembered I did the nuisance one. I forgot I had an attorney report. No, I have nothing.
Jim?
Had a meeting today with the, uh, American Finance, American Flood Coalition as part of our Iowa flood project, the bio program we're on. Uh, Iowa Finance, Iowa Pledge Center was here as well. There's a lot of flood. Yeah, um, we are looking at maybe having a public engagement meeting sometime in late September, early October. Uh, we're working on trying to get projects set up. Uh, one of the things we're looking at is working with the Art Corps of Engineers. It might be FEMA, but it may be Art Corps of Engineers to do a flood study, comprehensive study on the east side of town. So we're gonna try to identify what projects might be available to help reduce the base flood elevation. So we get some of those properties out of the flood plain, uh, and at least get some of them out of the floodway.
That'd be great.
Um, my biggest priority here is to protect and preserve those houses because as you know, you cannot build a house today for what you can buy those houses for. And that's the affordable housing. That's where we're gonna be able to get the first time home buyers in. But flood insurance is a setback for a lot of people. And if you don't worry about flooding at times, that doesn't help. So there are ways we can work to find ways to reduce our flood elevation that'll help bring them out of that flood plain. It's just trying to identify what projects are available to us and how we move forward with them. Obviously, we'll have this open meeting, talk to people, uh, parties, and try to identify ways we can help do this. The partnerships we may have to have with property owners and stuff like that, so. Um, it was a great meeting. Uh, this is the second time they, they came out to Iowa, because they're out of Virginia area, Washington DC, Virginia area. Uh, they came in February when we had a great warm day, it was seventy degrees, the wind was blowing really hard. And today it wasn't too hot, so they really plucked out.
And today it wasn't too hot, so they really plucked out and they came on business, but uh, that, that's a big portion of what we have going on. Uh, Thursday, I do have a conference to be, uh, be over there, uh, for the Iowa City Managers Summer Conference, attending that, um. But uh, we have an airport meeting meeting tomorrow at three. Uh, we have that special council meeting, airport meetings, joint work session at five o'clock on Wednesday.
And I'm just gonna add to what Tim said regarding our meeting for Wednesday. Um, I know you guys were still getting questions and stuff answered through the weekend and everything, but if you can provide any information that needs to be shared with everybody by eleven o'clock tomorrow, so we can have the agenda set, that would be great, get back to Tim ahead of time.
And I'll get stuff sent out to everybody and have that stuff ready for the, for the meeting on Wednesday. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any questions for any of those? Aaron, do you have anything too?
No.
Okay, sorry, almost whipped over, I'm so sorry. Uh, Brian?
Uh, the only thing I have at at sight uh was emailed by a young lady who, uh, up on North Franklin to come and check out her issue that she's having. It's uh between her and Frank Saylor.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you know, I went up there and looked at it, they have it streamlined out. I guess my question would be is how did we issue a permit to?
This is a civil matter between the two property owners. Um, when the guy was out there pouring concrete, there was a complaint regarding a property line dispute. They should have had their property surveyed. Apparently it was not, they didn't realize that there was an issue until something came up with a tree uh that they were trying to figure out who was responsible for removing the tree. And so at that point, they surveyed it and they found out the concrete was over the property line. This is between two property owners, we don't issue permits for pouring concrete.
Okay. There is no building, no permit, no nothing, okay?
Yeah.
So it wasn't obvious to you, you know, that we didn't find the pin or anything like?
We, we don't find pins, we have licensed surveyors, so we may guide you to where we think it is. But we will never certify that that's the location, that's, you have to be a licensed surveyor to do that.
And FEMA's Brian?
No.
Linda?
No.
Tonight, and Marian? Other, Joe?
Just continuing to work with the whole youth council, uh, stuff, getting that all wrapped up, so I'll let Tim know when we're ready to.
Yes, I do, I do, I, somebody's gonna show me how to turn stuff on again, because I have a recurring problem.
Taking their convertible?
Am I, I, we have a convertible, I'm taking his car.
You paint water towers and London cars out, I like.
Taking a convertible?
I knew, I had to learn that.
We've got the city managers' logo magnets.
Yeah, so the ducts outside, and then rub them up and down so they slide up the side of the car.
Do we still have that old uh go guard, there go guards, that black one?
No, we have-
Oh, that would've been the best for the mayor to be in.
Don't have nothing else, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just had a, and you can answer this maybe, Chief Davis, um, had a constituent call and wanted to say if we had a fireworks uh ordinance, why it wasn't being enforced. And I said, I understand there was a lot, my phone was blowing up and I was telling them to just call the police. And I know John Leclerc said they were out all day too.
The county actually had more calls than we did, we actually ended up only having to say so with the weekend.
Did we issue any tickets?
No tickets were issued, no, uh, contact was made on half of them.
Okay.
And basically, just advising of the city ordinance and they adhered to that, so half of the calls that we went to, officer stopped, said, you know, hey, this is what you can and cannot do. And then we received no more calls from that. There was two, a single location that two calls came in at, that nobody would be contacting that, which I think was primarily the problem.
Okay, okay, all right. Maybe next year we'll just have to give a ticket, because if somebody hears they get a ticket, maybe it'll stop.
Yep.
So, anyway, my opinion, but anyway, but thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all right, I don't have anything else, go enjoy the Delaware County Fair and give all the business you can this week, so we can support our four-H kids and some of it. I'll take a motion from Bill, a second from Joe, that we are adjourned, but we are adjourned.